Yes.
I would like to welcome everyone here today in our viewing audience to the March tenth meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off, it may interfere with the room's electronic. My name is Jim Rice-Rawfer, Chairman. To my far left is Bridget Carlson, Commissioner. To my immediate left is Tom Quinn, Commissioner. To my far right, Dan Dolan, Commissioner, and Vice Chair Angela Leibach. Staff presence, Scott Coops, Laura Berkeley, and legal is Brian Hyer. The zoning board of adjustments is a five-minute adjudatory board established by state law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. The board meets twice a month to hear appeals involving hardships from strip application of the current zoning laws. We also grant special uses and rules on administrative appeals. Are there any corrections to the minutes from last meeting? Can I get a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Old business, I see no old business. Now we have new business in front of us today. Welcome everybody here today. It's a request AA twenty-two dash zero one of Mr. Mike Malloy on behalf of John Davis slash Alley Cats LLC for appeals of administrative interpretation. Appealing to the zoning administrative interpretation letter dated December ninth, two thousand twenty-one regarding the sale of vehicles at seventeen oh seven West River Drive in the City of Davenport, Iowa. Property is zoned I dash two heavy industrial district. You know, staff, do you have this letter that they're... Is there a letter that goes with this administrative appeal?
The packet has the letter, yes, that staff wrote, the administrator wrote, zoning administrator wrote.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Staff, can we have a report on this, please?
Scott Coops, Development and Neighborhood Services. So, our office received an application on this schedule. And the description of their appeal is listed below here. Veric LLC, Alley Cats LLC appears... Appeals the December nine, two thousand eleven, uh, twenty twenty-one letter from the city, which erroneously interpreted the Davenport zoning ordinance. The use of this property as a vehicle sale use with outdoor storage was approved on February four, two thousand twenty. See attached February four, two thousand twenty, letter from Matthew Flynn to Derek Carter. And again, this is the applicant speaking here. We request the zoning board overrule the December nine, two thousand twenty-one zoning decision as erroneous and contradicted by the clear evidence of Mr. Flynn's February four, two thousand twenty, letter to Derek Carter and the issuance of business license to this real property in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-one. The city now claims Mr. Flynn's letter was an error and refuses to allow the auto vehicle sales to continue as a lawful business. So, just as you know, a reminder of appeal. Boards has options. They are, one, you can confirm the zoning administrator's interpretation as stated in the letter dated December nine, two thousand twenty-one, which is exhibit A in your packet, or you can overturn the zoning administrator's interpretation. If the board confirms the zoning administrator's interpretation, vehicle dealership uses would be confirmed illegal under the present zoning code with no other vested rights related to vehicle dealerships for the subject property. If the board overturns the zoning administrator's interpretation, a vehicle dealership would be allowed as a legal non-conforming use. So, in the letter from the zoning administrator, there was a number of points there. And additionally, we have comments to the letter as well. Zoning administrator's interpretation is that the vehicle dealership is not allowed use under the current code or has a vested right. A vehicle dealership was never legally established on the site prior to twenty one, two thousand twenty nineteen, when the zoning code was rewritten. Accordingly, transition rule F and non-conforming code sections do not apply. Third point, occupancy permit was never issued for any uses after the gas station case use ceased. So, the prior use that most people are familiar with of this site is a gas station, and so that use ceased in two thousand twenty-one. I'm sorry, twenty... Two thousand and oh one, sorry. Too many zeros and ones. MS Motorsports never opened and was never legally established. Point five, the building permit, floodplain development permit, and the elevation certificate were never approved or finalized. And number six, there's been no signed permit issue for a dealership or any other use after the gas station. Number seven, a review of Polk City Directory resources have listed no uses for the site from two thousand seventeen to the present. The last listed site was two thousand and one for the Knox Gas Station. And number eight, photographic evidence from fifteen data points over five years show the site is vacant. And number nine, the site has no electric or water sewer service for twenty months from October, two thousand nineteen to May, two thousand twenty-one. Number ten, M&amp;S Motorsports, State of Iowa Department of Transportation Dealership License D five zero seven four expired July twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, with a change of ownership for seventeen oh seven West River Drive from John Cernovich to Carter Auto Salvage LLC. Number eleven, the State of Iowa dealership licenses are not transferable to new property ownership and require a new application and a new dealership license. Number twelve, no State of Iowa Department of Transportation dealership licenses were issued after July twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen thirteen. Dealerships are required to be licensed by both the state and the city. And point number fourteen, the Matt Flynn letter and the subsequent issuance of a city dealership license is a moot point, as the use was never physically established and never had State of Iowa licensing. This next slide shows a timeline. This timeline was constructed from various sources. One of them was the Polk City directories. We also consulted all of the known aerial photography we've had from our services, nearmap, Google, and city and county sources. We contacted the Mid-American Energy Company for the electric information. We contacted the City of Davenport for the sewer, water and sewer service information. We contacted the State Department of Transportation for the dealership license information. There was no regular business licenses for this property, in addition to what we're discussing today. There was a city dealership license issued to M&amp;S Motorsports. Also, this table kind of shows you the... That there, the elevation certificate, floodplain permit, and development flood... Building permit were never completed or finalized, and there was no occupancy permit ever issued for this property, other than the one for the gas station. And again, just a small piece of information, but somewhat useful, is the signed permit. We haven't had any signed permits for this location either. And lastly, on the bottom row of the timeline, it shows the ownership. John Cernovich owned the property through twenty nineteen month, the seventh month. They purchased the property seven twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. At that time, that M&amp;S Motorsports Department of Iowa Transportation Business License expired because they cannot be transferred to different ownerships. So, since July twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, there has not been any State of Iowa dealership license for this property. This next slide shows some of the photographic evidence that we have. It has photos from twenty twenty-one through two thousand seventeen. And additionally, we have another slideshow with thirty other images that we can show later on if we need to, which also show that there's no uses and no auto sales ever occurring on the property. This slide here is the State of Iowa Department of Transportation Business, or dealership license, which is issued to John Cernovich and M&amp;S Motorsports. And this is from the Department of Transportation website, which their rules... We also have the code of state code as well, I can show you, but for now, their rules on the website state that a change in ownership requires a new application. So, that goes to our point that M&amp;S Motorsports had a State of Iowa transportation ship license through July twenty-nine of two thousand nineteen, but there was never... The state doesn't have any record of any other applications or pending applications or any other licenses for the property since that date. Staff was in contact with the state dealer's license program, and we received permit D fifty seventy-four for MS Motorsports. That was the only license ever issued to the property at seventeen oh seven. And again, the license expired when there was a change of ownership on July twenty-nine of two thousand nineteen. The state also informed us that no licenses were issued prior to the M&amp;S Motorsports license, and there are no current licenses issued for the site, and there are no pending applications for Veric LLC or Alley Cats LLC or anybody else on the property. I'd also like to point out at this time, some additional applications that weren't in the packet, or not applications, but documentation. The handout one is the Iowa Department of Transportation License that I mentioned for MS... M&amp;S Motorsports. And the handout two is from their website, and if you look at number six, it talks about the change in ownership. Handout three is the emails with the State Department of Iowa Dealer Programs, where I got the information from regarding the state licenses. And handout four is the chapter three twenty-two of the State of Iowa Code, which regards motor vehicle dealer sales. And the last handout is a paper copy of that other slideshow that we do have. It's the photographic record. There's fifteen... Oh, there's thirty slides there, correct. So, that's the other evidence that I would like to submit at this time. Our findings, since the change of ownership to Derek Carter on seven twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, there has not been a State of Iowa Department of Transportation dealership license for seventeen oh seven West River Drive. A vehicle dealership occupancy permit was never issued for this site, and no evidence has been submitted demonstrating actual operation of the site as a car sales lot. No evidence has been submitted demonstrating the site is a non-conforming site with vested rights to operate a vehicle sales dealership, and no significant amount of investment in the property has occurred with conversion of the property to a vehicle sales operation. Given these findings, staff recommends that the board move to confirm or uphold the interpretation of the zoning administrator per the letter sent to Veric LLC, Alley Cats LLC, dated December nine, two thousand twenty-one, identified in the staff report as exhibit A zoning administrator's
Does any... Mr. Scott, any questions for Scott?
Yeah, I do. So, maybe I missed this point. So, this property here, is it zoned to be an auto sales... Can they sell... Can they sell cars according to the...
Right. So, in, you know, from the report, the staff report, that was one of the first things we talked about, is that in December, I'm sorry, January twenty of two thousand nineteen, that's when the whole city had a zoning rewrite. At that time, the property had a new zoning classification for I two, which does not allow for auto sales. The previous code, it was a different zoning classification. It was consult... Called the M two, which is similar to, but not the same, as the new district. That district, however, did allow for auto sales.
Thank you.
Any of the other commissioners have any questions?
Just on the...
Yeah, on the very first slide, we talked about the erroneous interpretation. That's... That's not a statement of fact, that's the complaint.
That's the statement on the application submitted by the applicant.
All right. Any other questions for... Scott, how long has that been vacant down there, that you're aware of?
Since two thousand and one, there hasn't been anything, according to our research. The Polk City directories, the last use they show was in two thousand and one. None of the... None of the business records, none of the permit records. All the records mentioned on that timeline, we don't have any information about a dealership ever being used or established on the property. There was that M&amp;S Motorsports that had a State of Iowa dealership license, but nothing physically was ever occurred on the property. We have the City of Davenport M&amp;S Motor license, but again, there was nothing ever physically on the property.
So, to your best of your knowledge, no cars have been on that lot?
No, there hasn't been, correct.
Okay. Any other questions for commissioners? Applicant, want to step up on the podium and use your name and...
My name is Michael Malloy. I'm a Bettendorf, Iowa attorney, and I represent the applicants in this particular case. I want to, first of all, kind of orientate the board a little bit to where this property is located at. This property is at seventeen oh seven West River Drive in Davenport, and we took some pictures here to kind of show you the general area of what we're talking about here. The property seventeen oh seven West River Drive is located in this aerial picture on the far left, and as you can see, it's surrounded by a factory on the... On the north side of River Drive, and it's also adjacent to a semi-trailer truck storage lot. You can see the Walmart trucks lined up in this picture, and we've also given you a shot here of the actual auto sales building as it... As it presently exists today. Now, city staff has added things since their staff report. If you look at the staff report, we didn't have any timeline to look at that they threw up at us today. We didn't have this I dot dealer license regulation issue that they're trying to throw at us today again. I think the important thing here to understand, ladies and gentlemen, is that your jurisdiction is the zoning issue. It's not the I dot regulation. That's a separate issue that you folks, of course, do not decide. That's an issue that my clients will handle with I dot, and we think that's just side issues that the city is throwing at us here to confuse what's going on. Now, we want to make a couple of things clear up front. This property was properly zoned for a auto dealership business when it was... Since it's been operating as an auto dealership business. And we're going to present evidence to you today through other witnesses to show you that the operation was conducted at site first by Carter Auto Sales, first actually by a M&amp;M Motorsports business, John Cernovich, who sold the property on July twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, to Carter Auto Sales, and the property was ultimately transferred from Carter Auto Sales to Alley Cats LLC, another limited license company. Now, what you got to be clear on this is that the city already approved this back on two thousand twenty in a letter from Matt Flynn to Derek Carter. And you have that particular letter in your packet that I passed out to you as far as our exhibits. In that particular letter, and the letter is actually contained in your packet, Mr. Flynn states to Derek Carter that he may lawfully operate an auto sales business on the premises. That is dated actually February fourth, two thousand twenty, and that is in your packet, and I believe it's also labeled as exhibit ten that you have, that we've submitted to you today. So, there's no question that as of February fourth, two thousand twenty, there was a letter issued by Matthew G. Flynn, Senior Planning Manager, stating to Mr. Derek Carter that he was lawfully operating a legal non-conforming use on seventeen oh seven West River Drive for purposes of selling automobiles. So, then, this is where the... Where the matter evolves from there. Secondly, we've passed out to you business licenses the city has issued here, both to M&amp;M Motorsports, which is exhibit number one, Carter Auto Sales, which are exhibit number three and four. And those business licenses, starting with exhibit number one, specifically state that they're granting a business license for a car truck used dealership at seventeen oh seven West River Drive, Davenport, Iowa. The second business license issued that we have labeled exhibit number two is a two thousand twenty license that was in effect until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. This particular license was now issued to the same location, seventeen oh seven West River Drive, to Carter Auto Sales, which Mr. Derek Carter, who's present today and will testify regarding his operation of the auto business at the site. The city is trying to claim that there was never any auto business operated here in the past two years, and we will show that is false and not correct by evidence from witnesses here. So, you have a situation here where the city not only approved the operation in a written letter dated February fourth, two thousand twenty, from Mr. Flynn to Mr. Carter, but also they issued the business licenses. And these are the only business licenses that... That we were able to define. There's probably more business license than these for two thousand nineteen also. But the last business license that's been issued, which is exhibit number three, is still active right now. It hasn't expired. Doesn't expire until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And again, it says it's for a car truck used dealership on the license. It has the official city seal and stamp, signed by city clerk Brian J. Krupp, and the license, of course, shows that the city is coming in here and telling you one thing, while the city, on the other hand, is issuing the business license for the operation of this particular used car business. Now, the city started to show you some pictures. They're going to try to show you these aerial pictures that they claim they took from a drone to show that there was never any car sales, never any vehicles on the property. Most of these pictures aren't even material to this case because they were taken before the actual dates of the time periods we're talking about, from two thousand nineteen... Two thousand eighteen forward to today's date. However, the drone pictures are aerial pictures. They have no... No ground pictures. They actually show a view from the ground of the property. And all the pictures are, they're Google pictures. They're taken from an aerial view. So, what we did today was we hired our own drone camera to take pictures of this property. And we wanted to show you, first of all, we're going to show you a picture that was taken this morning at ten AM on the property with three automobiles under the particular canopy on the location. I'm going to pass that picture around. That was taken this morning at ten AM of the premises, showing the building and the canopy, and as you'll see on the picture, there's three automobiles under that canopy. Now, then, simultaneously after that picture was taken, we took a drone picture at about ten AM this morning on March tenth... Excuse me, this has twenty twenty on it, should say twenty twenty-two. That one says twenty twenty-two, we need to correct that also. There's a typo here. It says 2020, but it's, it's, if you have a black pen, I'd rather have a black pen. I have a, I have a black pen here. I guess I can use this anyway. I think that might be a little more appropriate. This one has 2022 on it. So of course, you know, what we're showing you here is the fact that if you look at these two and compare them, you'll see the ground picture, which shows the vehicles on the used car lot. And then you'll see if a drone picture that's taken simultaneously right after this picture. And you cannot see any cars because the canopy shields the cars from view. And that's what the city is relying upon here in their case on all these pictures. I, I want them to show all these pictures. They've got about 30 pictures. And they'll show them to you and they'll say doesn't show any vehicles on the property. They're all drone pictures taken from a hundred foot or more height looking down. Of course, there's no, there's no automobile showing because those pictures cannot show the automobiles that were sitting under the canopy. Additionally, these pictures were taken, many of them were taken at an irrelevant time period. Many of them were taken at a time early in the morning or late at night when the property was closed. And of course, the, Mr. Carter, running his business, often put the cars inside the building to protect them from any vandalism at night. And of course, he also used that interior part of the building to clean and detail the cars before he sold them. And you'll hear more from Mr. Carter, you know, on the actual operation that he conducted and how he conducted the operation at the site. So the city has given you false information here. Those photographs, they're going to claim, prove that there's no business operation here are erroneous. Just like the new legal interpretation they made in December 2021 after Matt Flynn approved the operation on February 4th, 2022 is also erroneous. I've given you in the packet Exhibit Number Four, which is the nonconforming use statute out of the Davenport City Code, Section 17.15020. And you'll see in that particular section that this particular property meets the criteria as a legal nonconforming use. Even though they did change the zoning ordinance in January of 2019, anybody who had a vested interest by operating a use that is not allowed in the new zoning ordinance is vested as a nonconforming legal use. And therefore, it doesn't matter whether this property was, the, the city had this massive rezoning in January of 2019. They rezoned everything. It doesn't matter. It doesn't affect this particular use. And of course, the location of this property, if you look at it, I don't know if you folks had a chance to drive down there. It's not like it's in a residential area. It's in a highway corridor area with a cemetery, a factory, a salvage yard, and a storage yard for Walmart trucks, semi-tracked trucks surrounding it. There isn't a home within probably 500 feet of this site. So it's not like it's a, this property encroached into a residential area or even a semi-commercial area. There's, there's no, there's no immediate restaurants, there's no immediate shops. There's probably a gas station within a couple of blocks. And that's, that's the extent of it. So you need to look at what the area encompasses and where this is located at. To understand that this was a legal use from the get-go and has never been extinguished by the owners, even though the city tries to claim today that it's a, not a vested nonconforming use. Now, we've given you also the definition of vehicle dealership, Exhibit Five in the packet. If you look at the definition of vehicle dealership, you'll see that it's an establishment that sells or leases new or used automobiles, vans, motorcycles, and all-terrain vehicles or similar motorized transportation vehicles. And of course, this particular use fits the vehicle dealership definition under the city zoning code. So we have a situation here of a small business trying to make a buck in the West End. And we have the city switching tail on, on the business and telling them that, no, they're illegal now. Even though the city told them in 2020 they were legal, the city issued business licenses to the business. And this business relied upon those licenses. You can't pull the rug out from somebody like this, ladies and gentlemen. There's certain fundamental fairness in any kind of application of the zoning code. Now further, we've also supplied you some further information on River Drive Auto Sales LLC, which will be leasing this property from Allicats for the operation now of the auto sales business. We provided you a certificate of organization from Iowa Secretary of State Paul D. Pate that was issued on June 14th, 2021. We also provided you a copy of the insurance issued by Auto Owners Insurance to River Drive Auto Sales for 1707 West River Drive, showing that the property and the vehicles on the property are insured through Nelson Brothers Agency in Bettendorf, Iowa. And we also provided you a copy of a bond for motor vehicle dealers that was issued by Western Surety Company on September 1st, 2021 to River Drive Auto Sales. And we've also provided you a certificate from the Des Moines Area Community College labeled Exhibit Nine, issued to Amber Davis, who will be operating, be one of the operators of the auto sales business on the site. This particular certificate for successful completion of the used motor vehicle dealership department eight-hour continuing education training was issued to Ms. Davis on September 9th, 2020. Finally, we've, we've, we've shown, we're going to show you another certificate of title. And we'll have testimony on this from one of the witnesses in this case also. It's a certificate of title that was, it's two pages. It was transferred from, the transfer was made by Carter Auto Sales to a business known as Jumpin' Joey's. They're a division at Five Points in Davenport. And this was the transfer of title for a 2004 Honda Odyssey EXL van that was transferred on November 20th, 2020. And Mr. Carter of Carter Auto Sales will, will testify to you regarding the fact that this sale occurred on the property at 1707 West River Drive as stated on Page Two of Exhibit 11. This directly, of course, contradicts what the city's claiming, that no sales have taken place on site. We'll be submitting other testimony showing you that other sales have taken place on the site. Other sales between, from Carter Auto Sales to individuals on the site. Mr. Carter will testify to you to the number of sales that he has had on the premises since he acquired the property and show you that what the city is claiming is erroneous here. There has been continuous sales on this property while Mr. Carter had the property. And there's no reason why this particular small business should be stamped out in the city of Davenport at this time. If you look at the evidence, we think you'll come to the conclusion that the Matt Flynn 2020 letter issued to Mr. Carter regarding the use of the property is incorrect. And the Berkeley 2020 letter is the one that's incorrect or erroneous. If you look at the staff report, they're claiming that Matt Flynn issued the letter in air. No, he didn't. He issued the letter correctly. They're in error now as far as claiming that this small business can't continue to operate. The business license was correctly issued back first to M and S Motorsports and then also to Carter Auto Sales. And Derek Carter will tell you today that he began selling used cars at 1707 West River Drive during the first week of September, 2019. He had five vehicles for sale on site in September of 19th. No, this isn't a big operation. This is a small mom and pop used car operation in the West End, trying to make a buck and helping people buy used cars in the West End of Davenport. Derek Carter would tell you he had four to six vehicles on, on the site on a given day. And he'll tell you that they were primarily were located under the canopy of the property to protect the cars from the elements. Or they were located inside the garage in the backside of the building for security purposes at night or were in there to be washed or detailed. I believe Mr. Carter would tell you that he sold approximately 20 cars on the lot while he owned the real property. And I think if you, you'll, you'll also hear John Davis, who is one of the moving parties in this, in this case, tell you also that he bought a Ford Mustang from Carter Auto Sales back in November of 2020. And you'll have Joe Vinhacchi tell you about buying the 2004 Honda Odyssey EXL on or about November 2nd, 2020. So there is a continuous operation of this business, use of this business as a used car dealership at 1707 West River Drive since M and M Motorsports began operating at this site. And I'm going to conclude my comments now. I'll open it up if you have any questions of me or otherwise there'll be some other folks that will be coming up to address you here.
So I noticed on these, okay, so Exhibit Two in your packet for the business license?
Yes.
It has a different address. So is this business operating somewhere else also?
It has a different address because the city required Carter Auto Sales, who has another operation at 2637 Rockingham Road to put that particular address on the license. If you look under comments, if you look in the middle of the page on Exhibit Two, comments, the city wrote, "Sublot location, 1707 West River Drive." That's what this actual business license was for. And Mr. Carter can explain further that the city required him to do it this way in order to get the license for 1707 West River Drive. And you'll see the same thing on Exhibit Three. On Exhibit Three, the license has Carter Auto Sales address, business address listed as 2737 Rockingham. However, in the comments section in the middle, it says, "Type, Car Truck Used Dealer Sublot. Comments, Sublot Location, 1707 West River Drive." So the city can't deny that these licenses were issued for any, any other location.
Just, just my question. I, I, thank you. Yeah, I got it.
Any other questions for the board at this time?
So, I mean, it's, it's clear that there's a, a license that expires March 31st of this year, issued to Carter Auto Sales. But who's, I mean, who's selling the cars now? It's, it's who is, who is Varick, Allicats, and Rivers City Motors? There's like three, three different companies here, which I don't see a license for either of those companies.
I'm still selling cars there. It was one of the agreements, which I'll explain about, but one of the agreements is selling the property.
Yeah, I'm going to let Mr. Carter explain that further. I think he can, he can explain that better than I can. Like I said, there, this property was transferred between three different LLCs for financing reasons in December of 2022. And you'll see that in the chain of title. On December 20, excuse me, it actually was December 29th, 2020. I'm sorry, I said 2022. December 29th is when the property was transferred from Carter Auto Sales to Varick LLC, then from Varick LLC to Gunner LLC, and from Gunner LLC to Allicats LLC. And we'll, we'll explain any questions about that further.
I have a question.
Sure.
This Exhibit 11, the certificate of title, Um, this exhibit eleven, the certificate of title Vehicle title. Is that being used as a Proof of business taking place? Because it's, it's listed as the previous owner was Brittany Robbins On West Fifty-second Street to the new owner Heidi Wiley and it, and Marion Iowa, and it has no reference to any of those company names.
Let, let me, I'll explain that briefly and Derek will go further. If you look at page two Um, Commissioner, you'll see that um, the actual transfer that Those are the actual um Previous owner and owner's names. You'll see that the actual transfer Brittany's Robbins signed the actual Transfer over to Carter Auto Sales As shown on page two, and Carter Auto Sales Sold the car to Jumpin', Jumpin' Joey's, that's the corporate name, on November twentieth, twenty twenty-two. So Mr. Carter can explain further how that works, but That's how a car ownership is transferred by a used car dealer From him to someone he sells it to, when he has a car on the lot That's actually titled in another owner's name. Any further questions?
Yeah, I, I do. Um, so I'm trying to, trying to walk through some of this, so
A lot here.
Yeah, if I'm understanding things right, um, on your exhibit four, you're talking about definition of non-conforming. Um, and the fact that it was Um, allowed that use prior to a change. Um, then it can continue that way, um, to paraphrase, right?
Right, so, so I, so you're clear on what, what I'm trying to say here, um, Commissioner. Um, the, 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 the use was a legal use until
To change.
January of two thousand nineteen, it was changed.
Right.
However, legal uses that are no longer allowed under the new ordinance become non-conforming uses.
Roger that.
And they have vested property rights to continue that particular use, even though The change in property use is made in the future. It's made prospectively. It can't take away existing property rights.
Right, so the number bullet E, it says if a non-conforming use is discontinued for a period of a year Um, Then that non-conforming use is terminated.
Right, and, and the city tried to claim in their original staff report, if you read that That this use was discontinued for more than one year. And the evidence that I'm submitting to you and the testimony From uh, Mr. Carter and Mr. Davis and um Mr. Van Hecky will prove otherwise. There was never any discontinuance of this business. Like I said, the aerial photographs that they took from the drones Are depicted in erroneous Situation because, simply because they don't show autos Autos on the property does not mean that there were not sales on the property, and there were autos under that canopy.
Sure, um, and while we're on that, but I need to circle back to that. You talked about vehicles being moved inside the building?
Yes. The building has a, has a garage door on the west side of the building.
And that's big enough to get an automobile?
And that's big enough to get two automobiles back there for Cleaning, any repair, detailing, that sort of thing. Or sometimes they're placed in there at night if the If Mr. Carter believed that the car might be subject to vandalism because of its year, make, and
Understood, yeah, the picture I have, the picture I have, I just couldn't tell if that door was large enough for that purpose, but
Yes, the door is large enough for vehicles to go through, in and out of that door.
Is there a state-issued automobile dealership license for Carter Sales Or Varick or Alleycats at this address?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is there a state-issued automobile dealership license For either Carter Sales, Varick LLC, or Alleycats LLC for this address?
I'm not exactly sure what you mean by state issue. Um, I think um, Mr. Davis or Mr. Carter can address that. But again, I would ask the board to focus on the zoning issue.
Well, well, I am, but if there's not a state-issued dealership license, then they can't sell cars on this property. Which means they're no longer using it for that purpose, at least legally, without a dealership license. And maybe someone else can answer that, but that's a question that I
There is not a state issue on this, on this, but I'll have Mr. Carter or Mr. Davis Um, address that further in detail, because I'm here as your attorney
Understood.
Speaking to you folks, the zoning board. I'm not here trying to argue the state issue today. State issue is a separate issue, and they'll have to, they'll, they'll have to be in compliance with the state.
I don't know that it's separate, because if they, if they don't have a dealership, then they can't sell cars.
Yeah, I understand that.
Leadership license. So, so then my other question to, to, again, to try to get to this E of discontinuation, if they didn't have electricity from September of twenty nineteen to March of twenty twenty-one, they're doing business out of the property with, without power?
I'm gonna have them address that also.
Thank you.
As far as what is correct, because I can't tell you the, every little detail about the electricity.
Why I'm asking all questions? Thank you.
Dan's correct. There's two issues here, and we're just addressing the zoning issue.
Correct.
And um, so
You don't, you don't, you don't decide the, the state issue.
Right, right.
If, if they were out of compliance with the state, like you said, they're not gonna get the license. That's correct, but um, we believe
But the question for zoning goes back to discontinuation, so A lack of a dealership license shows a discontinuation.
I have, I have a dealership license.
That's, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay, um, if you don't have any further questions of me, I'm gonna ask Mr. Carter to come up. I think Um, he would like to address a few issues here today.
Before Mr. Carter speaks, I, I, I mean, we're getting into an area that I think I have an ethical obligation, as does Mr. Malloy To advise Mr. Carter that this is a quasi-judicial body. And if he is going to stand up in front of you And tell you that he was selling cars from this location. And if he did not have a state of Iowa dealership license for this location He will be admitting to have committed a crime, and he has a Fifth Amendment right not to do that. So whether he chooses to do so going forward is up to him. But if he did not have a state license, he will be admitting to a crime.
We understand the law. We don't need you to tell us what the law is. Is that, is that intimidation or what?
That's an ethical obligation, Mr. Malloy. I assume you've had that conversation before.
Is that intimidation, Mr. Hire? Let, let Mr. Carter address that, please.
You wanna give us your name, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Derek Carter. Um, I'm the owner of Carter's Auto Sales, Carter's Auto Salvage, um, multiple locations here.
Before we go on.
Yeah.
You explain, Mr. Hire, explain a legal situation here.
Correct, yes.
You understand that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, okay.
Can you slow down a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, I talk, I talk fast, and if that's the case, yes.
Yeah, it should be rushed.
Slow me, slow me down, ask questions as we need to. Um, I talk a little fast. I, I've got a lot to, a lot to touch on here. Now, um, this location, um, you know, I, I was gonna start it out Um, uh, in a different fashion, uh, but given what it is that Mr. Hires talked about, let me go and get some background on the license. Um, I own two, I have two Iowa DOT um, licenses. Uh, state licenses for Carter's Auto Sales and for Carter's Auto Salvage, both. This location was not a primary dealership location. It was a sublot location to, to different things. We are allowed the, uh, the, to display vehicles for sale at these locations, but we take them back to our main location to do the paperwork. Um, Something that I had further down that I wanna touch on is that we're here to demonstrate the use Um, uh, the use of this location, and we're not arguing that this location was a primary dealership. I have primary dealerships. I didn't need a third dealership license for this particular location to display motor vehicles. And it was never really uh Like a, a main location of mine. I mean, it was used over time for, for overflow, for Um, you know, our operation of, of, of displaying cars, kind of when you come into town to try to catch some eye, to get some business more generated To the direction that we actually had on Rockingham, that I fought extremely hard to be able to get. This location here, um, in particular, as they talk about the letter from Matt Flynn, you know, they, they act like This letter from Matt Flynn was just a, a, a letter that there was no Other city involvement in. Let me tell you something, ladies and gentlemen, I went hard to get the license for this location. We had planning and zoning involved, Ryan Rusnick and Matt Flynn, Jim Odean from down in the finance department, Brian Hire and Tom Warner, you know, were Uh, I think fighting a situation back then. I mean, we, they crossed their Ts and dotted their Is, and there was nothing that they were able to do to stop us from getting that. In fact, when I did get my license, Jim Odean asked that he wanted to personally hand it to me, and I came down here and personally Got it from him in his office and congratulated me on the hard work that I did To push through what it was the city was trying to fight against, so that I could get my uh City business license at that location. So the fact that they say that this uh Letter was issued erroneously has only just come about since I sold the, the property to um Uh, the, the clients or whatever you wanna refer to them, um, behind me. Now, the use thing, I understand the use, as I did understand the use in the very beginning, and I know that the use, you cannot go more than twelve months Um, without the display of motor vehicles at that location. So when I sold them this property, one of the agreements was, was that I would be continued to allow Be continued to allow to display motor vehicles for sale um, at this location, so that we could continue that use Because they figured that we were, they were gonna have some kind of fight, as I had explained to them in the past that I did too. So that, that way we were able to extend the use even further, and as you guys saw Um, I think you had it in front of you, I still have an active de- uh, um, license to be able to Display motor vehicles down there at that location today. Um.
Mr. Carter, before you go on, explain sub Uh, License or
Yeah.
Yeah, explain that to me.
So, so the sublot allows for the display of motor vehicles at a location, you know, there are Um, I'm just trying to think of uh, I'm trying to think of any that we've got around here, you know, like uh
So I have my hair example, so So I get the mall, right, South Park Mall. They have cars from Nissan.
Yes, exactly.
That would be an example of a Where that, where you walk around the mall, you say, oh, that's a nice car. I'm gonna go to that dealership.
Yes, yes, um, they're permitted, they're permitted to, to display motor vehicles there as
You, you'll have to get ahold of the state to tell them what you're doing?
To get ahold of the state, tell them what you're doing.
Yeah, like you're, you're going to seventeen oh one.
Seven, yes, Matt Dingbomb's an Eastern Iowa vehicle investigator who went down there and inspected that site um For, for the use of, of vehicle sales. And determined that uh, I don't know if it'll come about, but determined that that uh, location was um Able to hold multiple vehicles inside of it, because I know that there was some talk Um, which I don't know if it'll come about, about there only being what's considered to be one Uh, stall space, and I think he authorized two, which allowed for Somewhere around the range, I think, of twenty vehicles or so for sale. That location is not a great location, let me tell you. Um, I had nothing, nothing Uh, but problems at that location, which is one of the reasons that I chose to sell it. I mean, we were ravaged from, I mean, everything, I mean, we had floods, we had vandalism. Um, times where we didn't even have enough inventory to be able to supply that, you know, like tax time, for example, you know, you sell a lot of cars at tax time, it takes a long time, you know Period of the year to be able to replenish. Um, COVID and converter theft were all some of them. So we kind of uh, changed the operation a little bit, um, especially once we had uh, the, our first set of vandalism. Um, I had five vehicles there that catalytic converters were stolen off of Um, very shortly after having uh Put vehicles out there for sale. Um, this picture here, I'm not exactly sure what the exhibit is, but Eleven nineteen of twenty twenty uh, was pretty shortly after I got started there. And we had vehicles that were spray painted, catalytic converters that were cut off cars, and you can clearly see what happened to the building. I mean, there's graffiti and stuff all over the building. That was kinda when I was like, okay, um, all we're doing down here is just, I mean, it, it seemed like we were doing more battling than anything. Um, I, I, I met John, uh, you know, through the purchase of a, of a Ford Mustang, a Mustang out there, and it was One of those simple deals, kind of a roll-up, hey, what's up with this Mustang? I'm like, we're cleaning it up, getting ready to post it for sale. How much? Gave him a price, we got the deal done. Um, Through the talk, uh, I, I don't know what his other, like, past, like dealership Stuff was, but I know he's kinda had his hands in on some other dealership stuff in the past, and he Um, was like, you know, we might be interested in purchasing this property from you, you know, if we, you know, get it together, you know, what, what are your thoughts? I gave him a price through the terms of negotiation, through um, uh, the attorney for the business and stuff, we were able to come to a deal. Um, In July of twenty nineteen, I purchased the property from John Cernovich. John Cernovich had an active license that time in twenty nineteen, as we know, the zoning and everything, uh, as far as that goes was good. Uh, they gave me a license in twenty twenty under the legal non-conforming use laws.
Wait, are there different licenses from the city and the state of Iowa to sell cars?
Uh, yes. Both, both require the licensing. Uh, both require a primary, and if you'll take a look at uh, Scott's exhibit H three, uh, page H eighteen, or I'm sorry, nineteen Where it indicates the conversations we had with the state. The state calls A sublot, what we call a sublot in the city, the state calls an extension lot. And that's shown on that exhibit.
So you're saying that you have both licenses? You have a license from the city And you also have a license from the state of Iowa? Correct?
I do not. Uh, I have a license from the city to display motor vehicles. I do not have a extension lot license. I wasn't aware at any point of the fact that I had to have an extension lot license for that application Because I, I'm, I was piggybacking off of the main city license. We spent a lot of time with the city Going over all this stuff with the state before they issued this license, and that was never something that came up, was needed. Now, if I was to um Uh, do our paperwork and have, have phones and have somebody regularly down there, yes, that was required, but just to use it as display Um, that's not required. And just, just as you talked about with the malls and other locations where they have sublots, they don't have Extension lot licenses that are given for those, because they take you back to your main dealership in order to do your paperwork, where they actually say that the sale I mean, you're, you're strictly just displaying cars for sale. You're just showing cars for sale for the most part. You can talk about it, you can make the agreement for the deal, all of that, but the paperwork is required to be taken back and actually done at the property. Um, you know, what your main dealership location is, just like uh, my, my, my sublot now that I have, that is like My, my mi- my main one, um, uh, twenty-three thirty-three Rockingham Road, that's where all of our, our Um, displays and sales and kind of deals for the most part are made, and then we take them down to uh Twenty-six thirty-seven Rockingham, where our clerk does all the paperwork and stuff for them. So I, 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 they're, they're playing on a gray area here, which I, I understand, this is what the city does, and me and Brian have went back and forth for just about every issue that I've dealt with, with the city, and Um, you know, that's, that, that, that's what they do, and this is why we're here to show you that we have been, you know, this, this use Not only was permitted, but I mean, it, it has been used, and it's not like it was just a, 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 an everyday thing, but continuing the use was something that I'm, I'm, I was very Um, technical of making sure that, that it happened, which is why we called a couple, you know, people that like Going through the paperwork. It was like, hey, remember selling a vehicle to uh, to um, Joe up at Jumpin' Joey's, you know what I mean? Maybe we can call him in or something like that, so Dug through, found our records, okay, yeah, we got this, and he's here to testify that, yes, this is where he sold the vehicle for sale. This is where, you know, we met, we talked about it, and just like anything else, he went back to our main lot and uh You know, purchased the vehicle at our main lot. So, you know, again, we're, we're talking multiple different issues here. The issue here is the display um, of vehicle sales without door storage, you know, or, or the, or the use of that, of the display of motor vehicles without door storage, not even the sale. The display of motor vehicles without door storage is the use here that we are Um, you know, here to argue, I guess, in front of you. Is that it? Okay, okay. Um, So uh, I, I think, I, you know, I first posted, you know, put vehicles out there Um, you know, pretty, pretty early in, first week of September, you know, approximately five vehicles. Um, Obviously, we were well within, when I, I had received my business license, and when I put vehicles out there for sale, well within the twelve months of the date of expiration Um, of his legal license, which from the date his legal license expires, you have twelve months from that date for the use to go from what it was to what it is now. Um, You know, one, one of the things that they uh, seem to talk about, obviously, you know, Cernovich isn't here, I don't know what he, what he sold, what he did at that lot in, in particular Um, is I had actually met him at the dealer auction, uh, at Insurance Auto Auctions. Um, I don't know what his, his uh, use of the lot is or what he was doing there, but um The license is what allows the use to exist here. Um, So if, if that property was underwater for twelve months, as it spends a lot of time underwater, does that mean the use didn't exist there? Even though they continued to re-grant licenses, they didn't just give me that original license, they extended my license even further for another twelve months. So I had a license there for twenty-four months to operate and be able to display cars there, just as we display cars there today. Um, Tax time being a very busy time, you know, that's kind of a, a, a good time, you know, that we use them, and then, you know, I've had some, I've had nice cars, you know, sports cars and things that we put on the corner. Um, you know, work trucks and uh, you know, things along that line, because there's a lot of scrap and salvage operations and things that go on down there, and those are the eye-catching things we're trying to get down there. You put a car down there, five hundred dollar converter on, it's not gonna be there in the morning, you know, and uh I'm, I, I already deal with uh, you know, the theft at, you know, my salvage yard and my I'm, I, I already deal with uh, you know, the theft at, you know, my salvage yard and my other car lot locations and things like that and it was just, it was just too much. Um, honestly, I was happy to get rid of it and I am rid, you know, like, for the most part, rid of it, I, I. Um, you know, have extended the use of uh, placing cars out there more for them because we knew that this is what the city was going to try to uh. Um, push forward was that they weren't gonna be able to have a car lot just as they did for me, so. Um, you know, kinda once this is over, I'm, I'm out of it and you guys should be really happy that they're gonna set up a car lot there and it's not gonna be me. Cause my, I, I own a couple, you know, I own salvage yard um, operations, it's not the cleanest, it's not the best and they've done a really good job at going down there, cleaning that up and making it look good. You know, fixing the graffiti and painting it, cutting down the trees and it looks a million times better now than when I ever owned it. Any question?
Yeah, um. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be, well, I am trying to be nitpicky, um, I'm just trying to be clear. So your use of the property has been to display vehicles. You sell them from your property on Rockingham?
That's where we do our paperwork, which comes to, to where our, our issue of um, like the utilities and stuff is, we didn't need utilities there to, you know, to display motor vehicles. And I asked, I specifically asked Jim O'Dean when I came down to the office and I got my license from them for that, I said. Um, if I take this lot and I sell it to somebody else, cause we were crossing the path, the, the path end of whether I needed to go get a primary state dealer's license or not. And I said, do I need to go get a primary state dealer's license for this location? And he said, why would you need to do that? I said, well, if I sell it to somebody, I said, right now, I bought, I bought a property and if the uh, because the type of property it is, not the greatest property. What's gonna make this property of value, you know, of any type of value, it's gonna be the licensing, it's gonna be the use that it's allowed for, so do I need to get a state license? Um, is, so if I still, and, and I asked, if I sell it to somebody, is it gonna be allowed to be a dealership? Are they gonna be able to go get a state license for this dealership? His answer to me was yes, that it was because the display of motor vehicles with outdoor storage was the use that was allowed. So it didn't matter if it's subplot or primary lot or whatever, that was the use that was allowed, so if somebody else went to apply for it. Then the use would be allowed from the city, therefore the state would grant the, the state license as long as it met all the requirements for like uh, garage size and lot space and things like that.
So you don't own the property anymore, you're selling the property?
I do not, I sold the property.
You sold the property?
Correct.
Okay.
I have no, I have no real, I, I'm like here, you know, for the most part, help these guys out because they're going through the same thing that I went through. Yep. Um. Let's see, what else we got here? Um, signage, signage was a, signage was a thing. Uh, if you go by either one of my lots now, whether it's the subplot, my primary lot, I don't have a sign at either lot, it's just one of those things. You know, saving a couple bucks, clearly you got cars outside, they've got numbers on them, si- signs are expensive, sign, you know, permits are expensive. Uh, you got, you know, insurance deals and, and the signage laws with the cities, seriously, uh, they are uh, uh, difficult to say the least, so. I don't have signs there, um, on either one of my current lots now, that's not a requirement, utilities weren't a requirement. Um, and I, I definitely didn't need service to uh, to have the cars there, you know, um, displayed. I already touched on the fact that my license piggybacked off of my main license, um. Just trying to go down here, anything else that uh, that I'd like to touch on before I uh, open it up for questions, um. Oh, you know, one, one, one thing, you know, is, is uh, you know, I briefly talked about, I've had my license for two years and just now, they're just now talking about revoking this license. Now, somebody else wants to go down there and, and have this, it wasn't a problem when I did, but now somebody else wants to go down there and actually, and I, and I think the deal was, was that I really didn't. The, the car lot operation was so minimal, you know, what it was that I did there, it wasn't like this huge operation. Somebody else comes in from a car lot, they're gonna have cars out there for sale, I think it's gonna look a lot better than what I had out there for sale, but I just, I, the car lot thing has always been an issue. I had to fight it at my salvage yard, I had to fight it at twenty-six thirty-seven Rockingham, I had to fight it at twenty-three thirty-three Rockingham. I'm tens of thousands of dollars into legal uh, legal fees and, and, and time sitting here in front of uh, you know, boards like you and the city council to fight this stuff. And this is just, I don't know what it is about the car lot thing and that the city just, for some reason, does not like it, I, I, I can never understand it. Um, uh, cars under the canopy, I mean, you, that's where you put them, I mean, it's, you, you go to any car lot. If they got five cars for sale, three cars for sale, or fifty cars for sale, their primary cars are underneath of the canopy and you, you don't put them on the street. The uh, um, the easement actually to the street is from the street, I don't know where the picture is, but it's actually pretty far back from the property itself. And that's just where you put them is under the canopy, like, it doesn't. Do a whole lot for the protection of things, but it just looks good, you got the canopy and you put the cars under, for, under, for sale underneath the canopy. I, I have enough repair stalls as we went through with. The city and the, and uh, uh, Brian Hire who's come down inspecting the state who has, I have enough stalls at my main location to supply two, two hundred plus cars. There's no limit to the amount of cars that I can have for sale in the, in the state of uh, um, or excuse me, not in the state of Iowa, but in uh, in Davenport. Um, so. Well, well, I guess what I'm saying with that is that I have more than enough space at other locations to put these cars, when it started to kinda become a hazard and start costing me money. It was kinda like, yeah, it's, it's time to figure out something else, you know, and uh, I, I just, I, I was okay with rolling it over. Um, up to ten cars can fit underneath of that canopy with no problem. Um, you know, there have been times where we've had, had quite a few cars out there for sale and to explain to you the operation that I was kinda running there towards the end. One, once my cars got vandalized and I lost a lot of money on that catalytic converter deal, was we used a lot of the inside base space to be, to detail cars. It was just kind of a, a, an area to be able to do that, you know, generator ran it for plenty fine, I mean, all you needed to run was a vacuum, the rest of it's just kinda spray and stuff, so. Um, we would bring the cars there, um, we would have the cars detailed, typically we'd just hire an outside source to come detail the cars, explain all the things that were needed. Then they would be brought outside, pictures taken, cleaned up, put underneath of the canopy so it looked good, we pu- you know, we'd post vehicles, you know, for sale. Um, from there, but then, you know, we would, we would move most of them uh, to one of the main locations to where it is that they went. And if uh, if we were gonna be there, you know, the next day, we'd bring some of the cars inside, we'd put them back outside uh, in the morning or we'd bring them back to the lot so that when somebody was there. Um, myself in particular, there were actually cars there that were displayed, I'm not gonna leave a court event out there overnight, you know, it's literally gonna be there just. Just during the day, um, as we're gonna move it to another location, um. You know, another thing too, I rely on my license allowed, uh, my, my, my business license allowed to sell this property to these guys. These guys spent a lot of money on the property and honestly, a lot more money than what it was that I paid for the property. Um, they bu- they bought it with the, the complete understanding that, I mean, the license is allowed. Um, what it is, there's no, there was no contingency, they didn't buy with a contingency that if you guys don't approve this, that they're gonna get their money back, if this isn't approved. At the end of the day, they're screwed, um, all of, all of the stuff that I had to show them and, and, and their attorneys. Um, everything looked good like it was supposed to, I mean, you got your license, you're well within the twelve months of what it is, you're still using it to display motor vehicles, I mean. All of that stuff was uh, you know, was in order, um, I, I don't know what more I can do to, you know, to help push this stuff forward, so. Um, if you guys have any questions, I, you know, feel free to ask.
I do. When do these people, I don't know the people that you sold it to, when did Carter Sales sell the property?
Uh, I sold the property. I think it was December of, December of twenty twenty, if I remember correctly. I, I thought you guys had it, uh, I thought you guys actually had the deed up there. Yeah, December twenty-ninth of twenty twenty, I sold the property to Varick LLC. Which was, you know, one of the uh, the attorney, you know, one of the uh, uh, property owners or attorney of, of some of the properties, he's, uh, was. One of the attorneys that went over all of the legal stuff that I had to be able to uh, transfer this property and he was well under the understanding this property was gonna be able to be. Uh, a car dealership, just as it always has been.
So you were aware they're gonna be a car dealership?
Yes.
And as a smart car salesperson owner, you said to them that they have to get a license.
Yes.
They weren't gonna use your license, right?
Correct.
And as of this date, did they get a license?
Well, so the, the issue with the license is that it stopped at the city. The city has, you know, has asked them to provide, as I've kinda been a little hand in hand on it, I've put a lot more time into it than I had really hoped for, but um. Um, it, it stopped at the city, you have to get the zoning letter from the city saying that this property is illegal non-conforming use and is allowed to be a. A dealership, that's where it stopped, I mean, the uh, 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 Matt Dingbomb came down for the inspection, said, you know, hey, that's good to go. Um, it's obviously, you know, um, uh, been checked out before, he came down to the inspection for M and S Motorsports, John Cernovich, who had, had owned it before. Uh, they were waiting for them to, to pretty much get their license, this was the hangup, was the zoning letter, which I had received, uh. I had received the zoning letter from Matt Flynn at one point in time saying this property was illegal non-conforming use, it was allowed, why now? Why now is it of error twenty-four months later? And I mean, where are the actual facts? Uh, that this letter was written in error, I mean, he was the senior planning and zoning um, guy at the very top of things. I mean, it even took some time before it finally made it to him and that is one guy that I assure you crossed his Ts and dotted his Is when it came to making this happen.
I have a question. So you said you sold it in twenty, whatever the date was.
Yes.
Twenty twenty, so, uh. But nobody can show anything that. No sales on that property or pictures of cars for sale on that property since twenty twenty. And we don't have licensing for these other companies, that's so. I think what's coming into, for me, what's coming in is this discontinuation of an abandonment.
Okay, well, um, currently, just as now, there are vehicles that I have displayed down on that property. Um, I, I, I have, I've continued to allow that to happen, they've continued to allow that to happen, as I said, that was one of the, the um. Legal arguments that we were looking to fight, I still had an active uh, city business license there, so the agreement was, was as long as I had an active city business license. If they did not have theirs, I would be continued to allowed, continue the allowance to display motor vehicles down there for sale. This is kind of one of those technical things too, did I wanna display motor vehicles down there for sale? Hmm, not really, but I did it for them. Because I knew what it was that they were up against, where, you know, exactly what it is that we're up against now.
So, so you displayed vehicles, you um, detailed, uh, maybe stored some inside. But your, your sales under your state's issued dealership license, your sales took place from your Rockingham property?
Yes, we take them down to the Rockingham property to, to do the paperwork, yes.
So from December twentieth, you gave, they gave you permission to put cars, the new owners.
Yes.
Down there since December of two thousand twenty.
Correct.
So it's never been abandoned?
It's never been abandoned, no. There are many, many times during the days and weeks that I'm sure it's looked abandoned, I've done uh, um, uh. You know, business ventures down in other states where I've been gone for a couple months, you know, and we, we always come back and we always make sure that happens, it's kinda one of those deals that we like. You know, wait for, kinda wait, almost wait for the city to show up and say, hey, you can't do this here, it's like, yes, clearly we can, we've, we've never, I've never ran into that issue, I, I don't understand. Why they're having the issue now. It, it's not, it doesn't have to be a continuous, every single day cars have to be out there for sale for twelve months, you know, it's a period, it's a period of time, that's what we've made sure that we've hit. And I have definitely used it for the tax time period for sure. Anything else?
Just for, just for clarity, selling is defined in the state code as far as the dealership as bartering, exchanging, delivering. Or otherwise dealing in, so it's, it's not, it's everything. And state code three twenty-two point three sub two says, a person other than a licensed dealer in new motor vehicles. Shall not engage in this state in the business of selling at retail used motor vehicles. Or represent or advertise that the person is engaged or intends to engage in such business in this state. Unless and until the department has issued the person a used motor vehicle dealer in the state. And has issued to the person a license in writing. That's page eight twenty-three of the packet that Scott gave you. I guess one other thing is, Mr. Carter said they didn't need utilities because they were just displaying them. Uh, the health code and the plumbing code require you, if you're entertaining patrons or have employees on a commercial property open to the public. You have to have restroom facilities, which means you need electricity and water, which weren't in service at the time.
I currently still have a license, that's something I'd like you guys to keep in mind, not only did it give me a license, they, they gave, they gave me an original license, they gave me the second license. And allowed me to continue to operate down there regardless of what the occupancy or the other. It's just the last thing, I, I, he had something to say, so I'm just gonna add to it, you know, I had a license, I had a second license, they continued the second license to happen. Just now, all these things are kinda coming to like, oh, he didn't have an occupancy permit, he didn't have utilities on, he didn't have this, they still allowed me to operate down there, not one time did they ever show up down there. Call me, contact me, come to me, knowing that they had a license and say, you are not allowed to do this anymore, I never received a letter, did I receive a letter from everything, from. Feather flags to um, you paint peeling on properties, did I never receive a letter or one time them telling me that I couldn't do this down here? But it's been not permitted the whole time for the last two years, I, I ve- I very strongly feel. Ladies and gentlemen, that you guys are gonna come to the conclusion that we, the display, the use and display of motor vehicles is allowed at this property. I appreciate your time, I do not wanna go back and forth with Brian here any, any longer, I'm gonna let other people talk, seriously, appreciate you.
Thank you. Is there any other, um. Well.
Wow, that's all I can say, is my wife's making pork chops, I wanna go home and eat, I thought I was coming down here for fifteen minutes. I did not even know, I met him for the first time yesterday, I met Mr. Carter, first time, I used to go by there all the time and I saw this oh-four Honda. And I thought, I wanna buy that, I kept going by and finding there was somebody there. Joe Van Heck, Jumpin' Joey's.
Oh, okay.
And you were a patriot, right, you purchased a car?
I did, and you know what he doesn't even know that I thought about, not only did I purchase one and, and they said I purchased it and it's just.
Hold on for a minute.
I gotta get home.
Well. We have a, a, item for audience to speak and you're getting out of turn.
Oh, I apologize.
You know, we wanna, we talked to the applicant, is there any other part of the applicant here? We gotta get him first, I'm sorry.
John Davis, one of the owners of River Drive Auto Sales. Um, before we bought the property from Derek Carter here, I personally went up and spoke to the city, I talked to Laura. Um, asked her about the property, uh, she told me that we couldn't do the, cause the new zoning law, we couldn't have the car lot there. I explained to her that Carter Auto Sales had one, she told me I had to bring her proof of that. I had taken her, I had come down here to the city hall and I talked to uh, Jim O'Dean, he had pretty much the licenses that you guys have. And I'd taken those licenses personally back up to Laura and she told me that would be okay, cause stuff was within the twelve month period. That time we applied for a state license, I talked to Matt Dingbomb, come down to the state inspection. At the property, they had us install a phone line with a fax machine and internet, we met all requirements of the state. We just need a zoning letter, that's what we're fighting for today, has nothing to do with the state license, state license is one thousand percent in order. They need a zoning letter stating that we're able to display a motor vehicle, that is the exact same license that Derek Carter had for Carter's Auto Sales as well as M and S Motorsports. For some reason, she's telling us it's not, we can't have it. The state, I had emails from the state stating, they've even emailed Laura themselves. Uh, she's denying the fact that, you know, for the zoning property is not zoned for is what they're stating. I cannot get the state license you guys are asking for until the city approves the zoning.
I do not have any.
Approve the zoning without the zoning letter, that's why you guys are treated for, keep asking questions about the state, why don't we have a state license there yet? I cannot get that, I don't know what he's got for his licenses, but I do know he has a license there to display a motor vehicle for sale. That's all we're asking for today is that license to display a motor vehicle for sale, I'm not asking for a state license to sell vehicles, cause that's not up to the city, honestly, it's not. It's up to the.
You're just gonna display cars there?
No, I'm going to sell cars.
Okay.
I meet every requirement to the state to sell a vehicle, besides a zoning letter from the so, from the city.
I, I understand why you don't have the license, no, yes, I understand.
Exactly why we do not have a license and that's what the license that Derek Carter has with Carter Auto Sales and M and S Motorsports has had. Is to display a motor vehicle for sale.
Do you have copies of these emails that were sent to Laura? Cause she said she didn't get any.
I don't have those right now, they're sent to my wife's phone on an email, she's not, we don't have them right now.
I do not recall any, receiving any emails from the DOT.
There was an email that you sent out to a, a few people, um, you asked me who all would, would be entertained and actually you sent it to them. I'm sorry, she sent the email to them stating that it was not going to be.
Them being the department, DOT, DOT, okay.
Right, that, that is what hap- this is what instigated my zoning interpretation letter.
Yes, your, your zoning interpretation letter is one that she had sent out to them denying that our zoning rights. And she sent that to me as well as one of the other parties here, has all got the same email.
What's, what's your first name again?
John Davis.
John, John, have you applied, since you bought the property December twentieth, have you been going through the process with the state?
Yes, me and my, me and my wife, uh, we have everything we showed you, we have the insurance, we have the bond, we have the phone, we have the internet. We had Matt Dingbomb as head guy, the DOT over here in Otis Boulevard, he came down, taped measures, did all his measurements. Everything's in order for the state besides the zoning letter. The only thing we're here to fight for is a zoning letter, which only thing that that letter states is where you're able to display a motor vehicle for sale. Has nothing to do with the state license, if you guys issued me that license to display a motor vehicle for sale. Has nothing to do with the state license. If you guys issued me that license to display a motor vehicle for sale and the state denies it, that's on me, that's on my, you know, but we're in that same, that same exact same license, whether it was a overflow lot or whatever kind of lot they want to call it. The, the meaning of that license is to display a motor vehicle for sale. I passed everything else with flying colors on this place. Besides, like, they're, so Laura's telling us we cannot display a motor vehicle for sale, which is an active license as of now. And there's a picture right here as of today with three motor vehicles for sale still at that property. That's all I'm asking for is a zoning letter stating I can display a motor vehicle for sale. Now, the state denies me, you know, you have to go through a background check with the state, you have to have insurance, you have to have bonds, you have to, so much square footage inside your buildings, it's a whole process. And everything went through besides the zoning letters.
Okay, well, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other from the applicant?
How we doing?
Want to give us your name?
Tyler Snuck. Uh, I was with, I was with John Davis, uh, uh, in the November. And, uh, we came upon a, a silver Mustang that was for sale down on seventeen oh seven West River Drive. John and Derek ended up course in a deal that got the Mustang bought. Derek, I was talking to him over, over numerous conversations about what the property was and what he's planning on doing with it because there's, he said there's a lot of vandalism down there because you don't have a night watch. Many people like to steal stuff down there, so. Long story short, we came to agreeance on buying. Actually, I'm from Alley Cats LLC, I'm sorry. I purchased the property and I leased it to John Davis. I purchased the property due to the fact that all the licensing from the city was all in order up until the point, even to this day, the license to display motor vehicles is in effect.
So you own the property?
Yes.
You own the property and you're leasing it to Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where the confusion is with the property license, went from person to person.
Oh, I understand, thank you.
You bought the property in December two thousand?
Yes, I bought, I bought the property in, in terms of running a car lot. And with everything going on with my hand stuff, John said he would, he would, he'd be able to get a license and get everything going on to be able to move forward to open another dealership, to use the same license that Derek has now. If you open the page up, I'm not sure, I wasn't, not real technical, but the license is still active to this day. It does not expire, it's never expired. The motor vehicle's always been sold from that property and that's the reason why I bought the property is because I was able to, to lease the property out as a car lot.
When did you lease it to John?
Uh, I think I take work, uh, probably July.
Two thousand twenty?
Yes. Sorry, we got the exact date.
January right after that.
It was January. Jan- January right after I bought it.
Oh, do you lease the property to Mr. Carter?
No, I, Mr. Carter is still allowed to display vehicle, motor vehicles on the property for sale up until, probably until John Davis gets his license, which went to the state. He has his state license, he has all licenses in order with this, with this zoning book. I allowed Derek to display motor vehicles on my property for sale because his license is still in order. And by keeping his license in order, that the license should be on transfer to John Davis for him to be able to do the same thing Derek's been doing for two years, the same thing M&amp;S Motorsports did prior to him. So this is a technicality of what they're doing with the licenses. They have a license to display motor vehicles, still active to this day. There was never a gap, there was never nothing, that is not in, in denial of any, anybody here.
Do you have a s- a state dealership license?
You can't get a state dealership license. You have, you have, he spent money on a bond, which was about, uh, no, I don't have a state license. No, I don't.
And, and say.
But their, but their's license.
We don't control that, but I'm going back to whether or not the, to, to, to continue the use.
Yes.
Of not conform, i- if the use has to be continued.
If you look at the deal, Derek, Derek, Derek's dealership license, the property is piggybacked off of his main license. Just like two, three, 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 Rockingham, two, six, three, seven, Rockingham, seventeen oh seven, Rockingham. All the pa- all the paperwork is, every vehicle is displayed. You can use different copies with the same exact license. His state license is still active with twenty-six, thirty-seven, Rockingham, if you look at the, uh, paperwork. And his subplot is seventeen oh seven, as they pointed out. It's the same license for the same location. It's the same, I'm sorry, it's the same license for a different location.
So you're just to be clear, so you're saying that you have continued use because Mr. Carter always had cars displayed on that property and he was always licensed? So there was never any discontinuity of use?
No, not at all.
That's okay.
There's always been cars displayed. There's always been stuff down there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But.
On, on the copy of the license, it also says this is non-transferable. So that to me means if he doesn't own that land anymore, it's not his property.
His, his license is still active to this day.
Yeah, we're not asking to sign his license over. I'm here to.
We don't want his license. He can get, get, John can get his own license.
Which, am I misunderstanding that? No, I, I do, I do not have to own a property in order to display vehicles for sale at that property. So the answer would be yes. I don't have to own a property just as the, the, you don't have to own the mall or own a parking lot. Guys, you don't have to own the property.
There, I, I think there's two different issues at hand. There's the state and, and the city. Uh, Derek is correct that generally speaking, if there's proof of continued lease agreement between the property owner and the person who's selling cars, that can be continued. However, at the state level, an, a new license would be needed that is not transferable between property.
For that, yes.
And if you look, I'm sorry, and if you look in your notes, you'll see that a bond was issued, insurance was issued, a license, everything was issued up to the point, up until the zoning. That's where everything stops is the zoning. And that's why we're here. It's been eight months of going back and forth. The zoning is the issue.
But that's why, that's why I specifically, if you were leasing the property to him, which would allow, if I'm understanding things right.
Going, going back over the time, this wouldn't have been an issue for the last eight months as it has been.
Derek, you need to come to the podium to talk.
A written lease, no. A verbal lease, yes. Verbal understanding. If this, if this situation here would have been resolved, uh, I don't know, however long, six, eight months ago when John would have had it, we wouldn't be even talking about being with outside the twelve-month period of time, as we literally just have within the last couple, couple of months, if you want to talk about from when, uh, he acquired it to what it is that we're dealing with now. He applied, he applied for his business license well within that twelve-month period of time, and that time should go back to when he applied for the license, not the amount of time that the city has dragged this situation out. That's something else to keep in mind. They have been dragging this out, which is why I've continued to display motor vehicles down there, knowing what it was that they were trying to do with this twelve-month deal. I did that for them. Has nothing to do with me. I did that for them.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in. Any other applicants want to speak? No, don't, hold on, hold on. Uh, does the applicant have any final comments?
Well, I think as the, um, testimony that you have heard from Mr. Carter, Mr. Davis shows that a couple of things. Number one, you don't have to own the property to have a, a business license, a business dealer's license from the state. And that is what John Davis is trying to accomplish here. And I think he's explained to you that he's basically held up right now until he gets the zoning approval from the city of Davenport in order to move forward with the state. So, as I tried to illuminate earlier in my presentation, the state issue is a separate issue from the zoning issue. If Mr. Davis cannot get approval from the state, he's not gonna have a license. However, he's gotta go through this step first in order to go forward with the state. And that is in a nutshell why we're here today, to have the board overturn this erroneous arbitrary decision because the dealership has been operating the, the, the sale of pro- of, use of the property for motor vehicles has been continuous. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this request?
I'll go home. So I'll keep it simple, um.
You want to give us your name, sir?
Joe Van Heck.
Okay.
I own Jumpin' Joey's. I don't really have a dog in this fight. I met him yesterday. I met him in November of twenty twenty. Earlier, it said I, I bought a car from him in twenty twenty-two December. If that's possible, it better be a DeLorean, and I'm going back to the future, because I did not buy a car from him in December of twenty twenty-two. But no, I, I met him, I drove by River Drive, I saw this Ha- a Honda Odyssey. I ended up purchasing. And he did make me take him back to his lot to do all the paperwork. Later, I ended up buying a box truck. I was gonna tell he, but it doesn't really matter. That's all I know. I was asked to come down here for fifteen minutes. I got pork chops waiting. Scott's gonna call my wife and tell her, my neighbor, tell her why I'm late. She's mad. I, I wasn't there last night at five o'clock because I missed the pork chops and cheese, so she, she's gonna be mad. This is two nights in a row. But Scott's gonna explain why that I'm not, it wasn't my fault. Bye.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you, you saw the car at, on what date?
In November, pro- approximately November twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I did end up going, he made me go to his other lot to do all the paperwork. He ended up selling me a box truck. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know him. I really don't. That's why I said, when they said, will you come down here for fifteen minutes? I thought I was coming down here just explaining, yep, that was, I bought that car. See ya. I did not know I was coming down. I wouldn't have come down had I known this was gonna happen.
Well, thank you for coming down.
See ya. Go eat. Yeah, Scott. See you, guys.
Um, is there anyone in the audience opposed to this request? Since the applicant gave his final, we'll pass on that. Uh, any board discussion?
I think just strictly from a, a zoning issue, I mean, there, I think it's been reasonably established that a, a car dealership is been, has been existing there for a long time and I think there may or may not be a licensing issue. That's not our, her view. Um, so that would just be my comment. I think we need to focus on the zoning issue and not worry so much about the licensing and all that drama going on.
Well, I think that was, I think that was pretty much res- I mean, that was explained why they don't have it, because they can't get it without the, the zoning.
Right.
Right, but without, without a license for the last period of time, does it, does it show that the use of that property has been discontinued? Therefore, it's not as established, so basically it's no longer grandfathered in.
Well, I think they're saying is because they continue to show property, show cars there, that it was never discontinued, because that's what I understand. That's what they're.
Per the city license.
So what about this, the health issues? How do you notify? How do business owners know that that's a thing? Because, you know, you brought that up.
Well, people are presumed to know the requirements of the businesses that they engage in and, and what's required of them to operate, which includes plumbing code, building code, electrical code, utilities, whether you need a state license and a city license. That's, it's a presumption of doing business that you know what you're doing or you're dealing with somebody, you're talking to somebody who can walk you through it.
Yeah, Brian, I got a question. Somebody applies for a business license in a building. Does the city make sure that the toilets work, that their electrical is working, that, like you say, internet and telephone? Is that a requirement to get a business license?
Depends on the status. I mean, and it depends on what, I mean, there are various departments that review an application and sign off on it.
Okay, okay.
There is a restroom inside the building that is working operable restroom inside this building.
Okay.
So, so according to the DOT, um, regardless of what Mr. Carter may, may have been doing on that property, there has been no dealership, there is no dealership license for that property since July twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen.
I thought that it operated as a sub.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about the city.
Oh, I see.
If the state license overcomes his second primary lot, I guess.
If you, if you're speaking to the board, you need to talk to, at the microphone.
So, so I guess that's a question I have from, a question I have for legal is, does his, does a state dealership license cover more than one physical address? Can it, or does it?
Just like a city licenses a primary lot, like Mr. Carter's on Rockingham, and would license a subplot off of that license. The state licenses a primary lot and licenses a subplot as an extension lot. And both licenses from the city and the state are required to lawfully conduct business.
But this, but the state.
You guys told me we needed a city license.
That's not true, Derek. We've been around that block many times.
So, so he has a state license, but.
He does have a state license, yes.
So the state license ends once the ownership changes, right?
Ownership of the.
So in. So the ownership ended when he sold the property?
No, that's, that's where everybody's getting confused. Ownership of the property changed. Ownership of the building, that the business itself is still as a.
M&amp;S Motor Sports had a permit from the Ta- State Department. They sold the property on July twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. That's when that license, the only license that has ever been issued to seventeen oh seven became invalid.
Say if you own your home and you're getting your bank, your loan through Bank of Trust of America, just because you refinance your home to a different bank, does that mean you have to move out of your home? That's basically what we did. Alls he did is refinance the building, basically. He still has a lease, a verbal lease with the owner, Mr. Snuck here from Al- or Alley Cats. He leases the property to this day, and they're still showing vehicles.
A big, a big question. Why don't we, they want this, and why don't they want the lot?
Hold on, no, we're getting out of.
Yeah, it is getting out of portion. Everybody's trying to switch it around to what it really is.
We're done. Sit down, please.
There, there has been no state license issued for seventeen oh seven since July of twenty nineteen.
Right.
We're just talking about some board members.
So, so I guess that's my point, and I'm, I'm not talking about what, what Dan would like for there to be, but there's been no dealership license for that property since July twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen, which in my view means legally, the use has been discontinued since July twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen. Which means that it's no longer grandfathered in from the, the original zoning of the property to the current zoning of the property. That's, that's how I read this.
I would just, just point out that that's the decision that the Iowa Supreme Court made in twenty thirteen in Moier v. City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment, where they held that the intention to abandon may be inferred from a failure to apply for a license or a permit, which is where we're at in this situation from the staff's perspective.
I applied and they gave me a license on the city level.
I want to point out, Mr. Chairman, you've let Mr. Hyer interject here. The, Derek Carter.
You need to come in front of the microphone.
The chairman has. Well, he doesn't come up in front of the microphone.
He has a microphone at his table and the chairman needs to recognize you as, to enable to speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Derek Carter has had a dealership license since July twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. Dealership license was issued by the state and his primary dealership. As he explained, the city required him to get this subplot business license. This is a subplot of his primary license. So it's incorrect, um, Mr. Darling, for you to say that the, there's no been, no dealership license on the property since July twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. Derek Carter has had a dealership license since then and still has one. Thank you.
So does dealership license list that property as a, they don't call it subplot, they call it a?
State of Iowa does not have any license record issued to Derek Carter, Carter Auto Sales for seventeen oh seven West River Drive as an extension lot.
Okay.
When I ask you, uh, you can get a sub lot license in the city of Davenport without a state license that you guys issued to Derek Carter?
You can, you can ask, but.
Do you have an answer for that?
Of course not.
The answer to that is you cannot, you cannot get the license that Derek has, not the state license of a subplot unless he has a state license. It's a subplot, it carries off his main state license.
I swear this is the last bit that I'm gonna talk about. Again, I displayed motor vehicles there.
More people to speak.
I, I displayed motor vehicles there.
You, you've had ample time to talk. Okay, board members, do we have any more discussion?
I think as I understand the, the process, you have to get the city zoning first, so they'd have to get the subplot location license, which he has, and then go get the extension license. So the fact that there is no extension license, so there's, so there is no legal dealership on the property since July twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen.
Any other discussion from the board members? Well, now the time is now, I ask for a motion.
I'm moved to confirm the interpretation of the zoning administrator in the letter addressed to Burke LLC, Alley Cats LLC dated December ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Before we go further, explain, Laura, can you explain the vote? If we vote no, yes?
So the motion is to uphold the zoning interpretation, so if you vote yes, it upholds the interpretation. If you go no, it would overturn the interpretation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we got a motion, second, let me, we got a second. Scott?
No.
Boyd Quinn?
Me?
Yep.
No.
Boyd Carlson?
No.
Darlin?
Yes.
And Rice?
No. concludes our.
Wait a minute, that was.
Laura? Scott, well, Laura, can you explain?
There was three votes in the negative, correct? Four votes in the negative? Okay, so that motion didn't carry. You didn't.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest for the record that.
Excuse me. Please sit, please sit, please sit.
My understanding is we were voting to affirm the letter sent and I believe four of us said no, we were not, we were not agreeing to affirm.
Right, which is denying my zoning interpretation, which means they can do the dealership. Is that what you intended to do?
Yes, we're, I'm voting in favor of.
Okay.
Me too.
We just want to make sure that.
Okay, I was to make sure.
Chairman, I would request you take an affirmative vote now overturning the decision in favor of the applicant.
We did, we did.
Did we just, did we just do that?
Yes, you did.
Well, I think you did it the other way around.
We're good.
You're good.
So that it? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. You guys enjoy your dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it very much. We're able to go open. Thank you guys.